The water, please join us in reciting the pledge to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limitedly, and just as for all.
Please be seated. Chair recognizes Planner Matthew Collado for reading the items that are not ready to be acted upon this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend the following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Nissconsett; number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates, Kings Park; number three, 2010-06 KBC Holdings; under waiver requests, number four, number seven, seven-three Scholar States Comac; five, number eleven, thirty-five, To Ammi Platt St. James; six, number nine, one-one-A Glen Hill Northern St. James.
Is there any of you present this evening who wishes to be heard on any of the matters that were just read? There being no comments, is there a motion?
A motion to recess items one through six as read.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the items are recessed. Under new hearings and decisions, we have an extension of a final subdivision approval, map of bridal court, a three-lot subdivision in Woodstallanga.
The applicant is requesting a six-month extension of the conditional final approval for the three-lot subdivision known as number eleven forty-seven map of bridal court. The final map of number eleven forty-seven map of bridal court was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board on November second, 2016. The applicant previously received an extension of this approval that expires on November second, 2017. The applicant is requesting an additional six-month extension to expire on May second, 2018. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has no objection to a six-month extension of the conditional final approval. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Extension of Conditional Final Approval for Number Eleven Forty-seven Map of Bridal Court. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request to extend the conditional final approval for Number Eleven Forty-seven Map of Bridal Court, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby grants a six-month extension of time to the conditional final approval for the subdivision known as Number Eleven Forty-seven Map of Bridal Court, beginning November second, 2017 through May second, 2018.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. We ask the board to go along with the recommendation of the Planning Department and grant the extension. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Any members of the public wish to be heard on this? There being no questions by the board or comments from the public, is there a motion to approve? Adopt first to close the public hearing?
In the matter of Number Eleven Forty-seven Map of Bridal Court, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, hearings closed.
In the matter of Number Eleven Forty-seven Map of Bridal Court, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, resolution is adopted. Next item on the agenda is amendment of conditional approval for a two-eighty-eight application. You have the memo?
Yeah. The request is to amend the Planning Board Resolution for a two-eighty-eight application on Sycamore Road approved on February twenty-first, nineteen ninety. This request was originally scheduled to be heard June first, 2016. The applicant requested that the matter be adjourned to review the attached recommendation and seek the opinion of private counsel. To date, the applicant has not contacted the Planning Department to indicate how he wishes to proceed with this request. In order to remove the item from the board's agenda, the Planning Department advertised the request for the November first, 2017 Planning Board Meeting. The applicant was notified via email that the item would be discussed on this date. The Planning Department recommends that the Planning Board deny the request for the reasons offered in the department's memorandum dated June first, 2016, and offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, Amendment of Two-eighty-eight Resolution dated February twenty-first, nineteen ninety, Sycamore Road. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of William Sevchik to amend the Planning Board Resolution for a two-eighty-eight application on Sycamore Road approved February twenty-first, nineteen ninety, now therefore be it first resolved. The Planning Board hereby denies the request of William Sevchik to amend the Planning Board Resolution of a two-eighty-eight application on Sycamore Road dated February twenty-first, nineteen ninety, for the following reasons. One, the proposed amendment is substandard in design. Two, there is a reasonable alternative. Three, there are structures in the right-of-way not located in the shoulder.
Is the applicant or his representative present this evening? Is there any members of the public who wish to be heard on this? Any questions of the board should have asked first? This has been in the works for...
It's been dormant for over a year.
And he's not here to defend himself or talk for himself tonight?
No? He is not. We have a resolution before us. The Planning Department recommends adoption of the resolution. First, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
In the matter of the two-eighty-eight, two-eighty-eight application, Sycamore Road, William Sevchik, a motion to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, public hearing is closed, and on the resolution?
In the matter of two-eighty-eight application, Sycamore Road, William Sevchik, I move that we adopt the resolution as read in accordance with the recommendation of the Planning Department.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Being no one in opposition, the resolution is unanimously adopted. The next item on the agenda is a waiver request for Archer Hills in Smithtown, modify a condition of approval regarding fence and plantings.
The applicant requests to waive condition C of the Planning Board Resolution dated December seventeenth, 2014, in order to allow a chain-link fence to remain atop the upper retaining wall on Lot Two within the subdivision known as Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills. The final map of Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills was granted conditional final approval by the Planning Board in nineteen sixty-seven. The map was approved with a limited access and planting easement along St. Johnland Road on lots one, two, and three. Additionally, pursuant to condition L of the nineteen sixty-seven approval, a fence was to be placed along the top of the slope in line with the fence from the subdivision to the south, map of Riviera Ridge, section one. In 2013, the owner of Lot Two submitted a waiver request to modify the limited access and planting easement in order to legalize the construction of two eight-foot retaining walls, the clearing of twelve feet of leveled area at the top of the wall, and the relocation of the fence required by condition L. On December seventeenth, 2014, the Planning Board approved the request with the following conditions. A, both the retaining walls and the fence shall be densely screened from the street with a mix of native plantings in accordance with the planting plan to be approved by the planning director. B, per the engineering department, the applicant will submit amended plans to the building department that addresses the storm-water runoff to ensure compliance with the town's drainage and stormwater regulations. C, the original fence line established in condition L of Archer Hills, Number Two-Ninety-Nine, may be relocated into the limited access and planting area a minimum of three feet from the top of the upper retaining wall. In order to minimize the visual contrast and blend into the natural surroundings, the fence shall remain a four-foot-high chain-link fence or other non-opaque fence. D, the leveled area of the easement between the new fence line and the original fence line shall be densely planted with a mix of native trees and vegetation, subject to a planting plan to be approved by the planning director. This area shall remain part of the limited access and planting area, and no structures shall be permitted. E, the applicant shall file in the office of the Suffolk County Clerk a restrictive covenant on a form acceptable to the town attorney, limiting the use and modifications of the premises consistent with the aforementioned conditions, and acknowledging that this property contains a limited access planting area west of the fence line established by Archer Hills, Number Two-Ninety-Nine, which may not be further modified without prior approval of the Planning Board. The applicant is requesting to waive condition C of the December seventeenth, 2014 resolution, so as to allow the existing chain-link fence to remain atop the upper retaining wall instead of the minimum three feet back from the retaining wall per the resolution. The engineering department has reviewed the waiver request and has no objection. The highway and traffic safety departments have no comment. The Planning Department has reviewed the request and has no objection to allowing the fence to remain atop the upper retaining wall for the following reasons. The applicant has planted a dense row of evergreens inside the fence line that effectively screen it from view. Two, the fence is black-coated chain-link, which allows it to blend in with the surrounding environment. Therefore, moving it to the other side of the planted evergreens would have little to no visual benefit to pass her by on St. Johnland Road. The Planning Department offers the following resolution for the board's consideration. Planning Board Resolution Number Blank 2017, waiver request of prior Planning Board Resolution dated December seventeenth, 2014, Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills. Whereas the Planning Board has considered the request of Stephen DeMarco to waive condition C of the Planning Board Resolution dated December seventeenth, 2014, within the subdivision known as Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills, now therefore be it first resolved that the Planning Board hereby waives condition C of the Planning Board Resolution dated December seventeenth, 2014, within the subdivision known as Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills, for the following reasons. One, the applicant has planted a dense row of evergreens inside the fence line that effectively screen it from view. Two, the fence is black-coated chain-link, which allows it to blend in with the surrounding environment. Therefore, moving it to the other side of the planted evergreens would have little to no visual benefit to pass her by on St. Johnland Road.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Vincent Tramarko. I represent the applicant. You've heard the recommendation of the Planning Board, Planning Department, excuse me, and I just want to indicate that through this process, we consulted with the Planning Department on numerous occasions, spoke to Peter Hans with respect to the type of plantings. I believe he went out there once or twice, and then the plantings were verified by Allison So we ask the board to go along with what the Planning Department recommends so that we can end this application once and for all.
Okay. I noticed from photographs provided to us by the Planning Department that there are some small bushes planted in front of the lower wall. I would like to, you know, go out and visit this site once again. I was there several years ago when we had various issues with them building the wall while the item was before this board and recessed. There was also the issue with the location of the fence, which was constructed against the wishes of the Planning Board and the desire, and I believe one member of the Planning Board offered an alternative compromise where the fence would be set back three feet instead of the twelve or ten feet that was originally proposed, and that compromise was disregarded. So in light of the prior issues we've had with the applicant, I would like to go out and visually look at this project and see exactly what is on site right at present. I don't know if anyone else would like to...
I agree with that.
Never a bad idea to go see something.
Exactly.
Okay. Now, the issue we have at the November fifteenth meeting of agenda is going to be quite lengthy, and you, and the applicant may be there for the evening. Would you rather wait until December thirteenth, when we're back at this location and not at the senior center?
I thought this was being resolved tonight. I thought this was being resolved tonight with the town attorney.
If you would just please state your name for the record?
Stephen DeMarco, Full Monroe Court. My understanding that this was being resolved tonight after several years of going through this, that was my understanding.
Then, that was a correct assumption.
Well, that's from your town attorney.
Well, the town attorney does not sit on this board. So we could do this November fifteenth if you'd like to go to the hearing at the senior citizens center that evening or wait until December thirteenth.
I don't have any objection to going to the senior citizens.
The only reason that I think that it's being discussed is that we expect that that's going to be a very lengthy meeting. We expect that. So that if you're on the calendar after that, you might be there for quite a long time. So he's giving you the option of perhaps not having to be there for a very long time and coming back the following month. It's up to them, right? You don't, it doesn't matter to us.
No, no, I understand, and I think we'd be better off in December rather than... But I just want to clarify something Mr. DeMarco brought up. We did deal with the town attorney, and the town attorney was very helpful in working this supposed situation so we could all reach some sort of a resolution of this matter. We obviously know, or maybe he didn't know, but I sure as heck know that the town attorney isn't the board, the Planning Board, and it's the Planning Board's prerogative to do what it feels like doing. So hopefully after you look at it...
I think probably the misconception here is that you were before dealing with the town attorney because it was violations, and it was not because of anything with this board.
And no one's saying that it's not going to be granted, no one's saying it's not going to be denied, but I think some people want to go look at it before a final decision is made, that's all.
We've been doing that. That's been our practice for a while now. I think we like to go out.
Right, no, I understand. I guess I should explain it to Mr. DeMarco outside rather than here, so.
Okay. Okay. Motion to recess the public hearing to December fifteenth, thirteenth?
In the matter of Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills, a motion to recess the public hearing to the December thirteenth, 2017 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the item is recessed, and on the resolution, we, taveling is in order?
In the matter of Number Two-Ninety-Nine Map of Archer Hills, I move that we table the resolution to the December thirteenth meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, being none, item is tabled, the resolution's tabled. Next item on the agenda is a preliminary subdivision for Core Land Division. Kings Park applicant is requesting a recess. Did he request a date certain or...
I think he's waiting for the New Year, but no date.
Okay. So...
I don't think it needs to be recessed to a date certain. I don't think he posted any signs anyway, so he'll have to do that.
All right. So if it's not posted, what do we do? Do we just recess it?
I think they're called Sinodae.
Wow, that's Latin. Very impressive data.
Not really.
Yeah, so we could just...
I probably mispronounced it.
I think it's Sinodae, but whatever. Who knows? It's the right concept. So we could just recess it, and then if and when they want to bring it up again when they're ready, they can post it, and then it'll be off of that date, I guess.
Okay.
What motion?
Motion.
In the matter of Number Eleven Sixty-nine, Core Land Division, Kings Park, move that we recess the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the hearing is recessed. Now we have the adoption of the minutes, and is there a motion to approve the minutes of... I have a change to make in the October fourth minute, so perhaps we do it separately. On the October fourth, twenty seventeen minutes, I would just like to make a change in the minutes by remarks attributed to me. On page nine, line eighteen, that line should read, "I have known over the years several residents on Burham Court," end quote. And if you, I would move that the minutes be approved with those changes.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the minutes are approved. Minutes of the October twenty-eighteen, twenty-seventeen.
Move that we adopt the minutes of the October eighteenth, 2017 meeting of this board?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, the minutes of the October eighteenth meeting are adopted. There being no further business before the board...
Do you want to just address Wallya Plack?
Under other matters?
Under other matters, yes, Mr. Tramarko has requested that the board give preliminary advice on a potential application, and I have been advised by counsel that perhaps by giving him our input, we would be considered prejudging the case. So I would leave it to the...
Well, maybe counsel would allow me to stipulate that you're not prejudging the case, and I wouldn't put it... Here's the problem. Let me just indicate to the board. If this type of thing continues where virtually every subdivision can be determined to be a cluster subdivision, then fine, we'll just go in with a cluster every time. As far as I'm concerned with this particular one subdivision and Steve Cataldo, who worked with me on it, in a million years, we never even anticipated this would be a cluster application. So, and this isn't for litigation purposes, I just need some guidance to look at these things and how do we move forward? Because if you look at what the guidelines are for cluster applications, I'll bet you every subdivision in the town of Smithtown would qualify for cluster. Now, cluster is a very specific thing, and I'm talking generally now. Cluster is a very specific thing. And generally, in the past, it was used for situations where there were steep slopes, where there was wetlands, where there was approaching wetlands, where we needed to shorten up the lots and perhaps dedicate or preserve those areas which weren't conducive to building projects. And I think that was the very purpose of the subdivision, cluster subdivision ordinance that we have in the town. We're in a situation now, not only with the Wallya Plack, but with every one of the subdivisions I have. Do I come in with a cluster application to start with and perhaps mess up the whole character of the area where, you know, specifically, if you look at the Sunny Road project, all of the lots are long lots? And all of a sudden, now we're going to preserve trees and we're going to preserve dirt? For what reason? So I don't... This board has to, in my opinion at least, give us some guidelines with respect to this, or every time we do a subdivision, we have to spend all of this money, come into the board, presumably, you know, we have to wait because the only one that came in was the Planning Department, and I'm glad they did it right away. That was a good thing, and the board is sitting here listening, I hope listening, to what I'm saying. So engineering and highway and everybody else will come back, but we had to spend a heck of a lot of money to have this map produced. So now the map is produced, and ultimately, it'll come to the board, and the board will say, "No, we don't like this, we want a cluster." Go back to the drawing board and start all over. There's got to be a better way. I don't know that I know the answer, but I don't particularly feel that this meets even the objectives of the cluster zoning. But counsel is right, this is not a hearing. And again, I'm not looking to create a lawsuit tonight, but I don't think that we should be in a position where we have many, well, whatever subdivisions we have left in Smithtown are either potential litigation or a potential waste of a lot of money. And believe me, I don't know the answer. Maybe you do, Mr. Chairman, or any of you members of the board. I've been doing it a very, very long time. These cluster applications, cluster recommendations have only come up in the last two years.
Obviously, you've met with the Planning Department on this issue as well as others, and perhaps Mr. Flynn could address this and give us his advice?
I have a couple of points. One is I understand Mr. Tramarko's frustration, probably not to the degree that he does, but I understand it. It's a little exaggeration to say that all of the subdivisions would have to be clustered, but it's not much of an exaggeration. I think the solution is to recommend that the town board amend the code.
I think they'd have to, because we're bound to follow the code. If the code says, "These are the things that we have to apply," we have to apply it. We can't just disregard the code.
That's my feeling, and that's why we recommend cluster. As Allison pointed out, Allison Murray pointed out in a recent memo, the ordinance doesn't define how much the planning board is required to cluster, but it's required to cluster. So I, I mean, it sounds flippant, but when all else fails, follow the law. So we're recommending what the code says, even though sometimes it doesn't make a ton of sense. There seems to be no discretion because it says "shall." There's no provision for waivers or whatever, but I think the solution is to propose an amendment. I mean, if you wish, I mean, I'll do it on my own, but if the board wishes to express its support for changing the subdivision regulations, I'll relay that to the town board.
I think certainly such a suggestion would be in order.
Well, first of all, we have a...
They may not agree.
Of course they may not.
They may leave it the way it is, but...
But just so we can be clear, we have attached to the packet a copy of chapter two-forty-eight of the town code, says subdivision of land, article ten, variants of zoning regulations, section two-forty-eight, there's thirty-one authorized powers, and then within that is some findings, but then there is a section that says, "To criteria for review and approval, a proposed residential subdivision within the town shall be clustered if it will impact on any of the following natural resources or phenomena." And then there's a list of...
Fourteen, then?
Fourteen items. That's what we're talking about, correct?
Correct.
So that the town board has saw fit to pass the code that says it has to be clustered if it'll affect any of these things, and as far as I'm concerned, if that's what the town code says, we have to go by it. And if someone thinks maybe there should be a fifteenth thing that gives us discretion to waive or relax or modify any of those, that might be, on its merits, a good idea, but we can't do that. The town board would have to do that so that we would have more leeway in addressing some of these issues that Mr. Tramarko has to deal with and other attorneys have to deal with.
I think if the town board is agreeable, it's pretty easy to solve.
You could put like another one there saying the board in its discretion may, you know, relax or waive or modify, you know, you don't want to make it too loose, but you could give a little room there in situations when the application warrant it. To me, that might make sense, but again, it's up to the town board.
I think you do have room, since you brought it up. It's a question of, does it affect those listed items? And that's the, you know, that's the rub. That's what this board also is required to do. And the only two that Allison mentioned was mature trees, which I don't know what the heck mature trees are, and certain soil agricultural...
With all due respect, you really, you know, you're not following the process, okay? There's three components to the process.
Mr., what's your name again? You interrupted me. Let me finish, and then you can talk.
No, I'm not going to let you finish because I have to represent the board and cut off the dialogue because you're going out of bounds now.
You don't have the power to cut off my dialogue.
Well, I'm going to do it anyway because you're out of bounds, and I want to advise the board before you continue to speak.
Easy, easy, guys. Let's keep it nice, please. Respect to the board.
There's a three-part process. The process is, as the board members just stated, you start with a statute. The board has no ability to change that statute. It is whatever it is. It's interpreted by lawyers, it's interpreted by the courts. To the extent that somebody wants to make a recommendation with respect to how it's being implemented, that's why you have a professional planning department. But this board is an independent board. You can't start to get into the details of somebody's pre-application application and start to give advice, start to prejudge the application...
give advice, start to prejudge the application before it's even finalized. So that's why we're going across the boundary. Well, I'm not even talking about this specific application, because frankly, I don't have anything in front of me on this particular application. He just started to read from Allison's document. I'm just, I'm just saying that.
I never said anything about a specific application. You were going through the terms.
The criteria. I'm just saying, as far as this, any particular application, I don't have any information in front of me to decide whether that application has an impact on any of these items or not. I'm just talking in the general sense.
Okay.
And as far as the discretion that we have, it says if it will impact on any of the following natural resources or phenomena. So I presume that somebody has to decide or determine whether or not the application will impact on any of these things. That, I would assume the planning department would give us a recommendation on whether it does or it doesn't. And if, if they say it does, then we have to decide whether that is or isn't. And if it is, then it has to be clustered, because that's what the town board said.
And if it isn't, it doesn't.
Correct.
Okay. So then I have to come through with a whole application. There's no other way.
Well, the other, the only way is to follow what Mr. Flynn suggested, is that perhaps if the process is viewed as being onerous in certain circumstances, perhaps a recommendation or a request could be made to the town board to address that in the code. But as the code stands right now, we have to follow the code. It's as simple as that. The way I see it. It's not complicated. There's a statute, there's a planning department. The town board is a legislative body for the town. They passed the code. We have to follow it. If somebody is saying that complying with the code in every instance is too onerous, and there has to be some modifications, that might be true, then Mr. Flynn has a good suggestion. Maybe even Mr. DiMarco can give him suggestions, or other people can, as to how it might be modified, and that can go to the town board. If the town board agrees, it'll be modified. If they don't agree, then it won't. Absolutely correct.
So I understand around this time of year, you, you've come up with a list of legislative suggestions for the town board to act on, usually beginning of the year?
I don't know if there's.
This might be part of a good legislative agenda, too.
To be fair about this, it should only be if the planning department professionals, in their own independent judgment, separate and apart from what anybody else is saying, have reached, you know, a point in the process where they think they need clarification. Well, they agree with him. Right. If they agree with him, then they should do it. If they don't agree with him, they should leave it as is. But it shouldn't be like the planning department is now going to become, you know, the consultant to an outside party to advocate for changes at the town board. You got to be careful. So if the, if the planning department over the last several years has been coming to its own internal, you know, calculation or conclusion that there are difficulties with upholding the statute, yeah, fine, they can make a recommendation to the town board. Well, Mr. DiMarco is a private citizen. He's an attorney. If he wants to go to the town board at the next meeting, he's free to go to the town board meeting and say, this section of the code should be modified, and here's why. Absolutely. And they'll listen to him. Absolutely. They may not do it, but they, but they will listen to him. But if, if anybody wants to communicate with the planning department, I don't think, I'm not going to speak for them, I think they would be willing to listen to people's suggestions, and if they agree with them, maybe, maybe make them, and if they don't agree with them, then they won't. Or maybe they'll have their own suggestions.
Were changes made before, like with slopes, percentage of slopes?
Some were. I had drafted an amendment that dealt with this probably about May, but our priorities got shifted by the town board in June, so I haven't had a chance to get back to it. So I'll let them know.
Obviously, it's up to you, Mr. Flynn, and you're the, you know, the head of the department, and if you feel like making a recommendation on this or anything else, or if you feel like discussing it with people who practice in the field or people who have land in the town, that's up to you.
Okay.
And if you think that the town code could be bettered by making these amendments, then obviously, then by all means, do what you think is best.
Okay. The town board will do what it does.
Right. Nobody's saying that they don't agree with anything that anybody says.
And then we'll all live with it, whatever.
They may agree, they may adopt it, they may say no. Like, that's up to them. That's why they're the town board.
Sounds like the plan.
I'm sorry we couldn't resolve this particular issue, but I think looking at this as an issue that you face, perhaps I think it's best you contact, you know, the town board and advise them of your concerns. You know how long that takes? All right. I thank you, I thank the board for.
Well, certainly, I think that if there's a particular application, again, someone could say, well, you know, bring it in before it's filed.
Yeah, you're right.
Do you think this, what do you think? Do you think that this will impact any of these items? And if they want to tell you, they will. If they don't want to tell you, they won't.
I mean, anybody can go to the town board and speak, you know, as a citizen of Smithtown.
That's what I'm saying. Correct.
We've seen that on occasion.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it happens once in a while.
All right. Well, thank you for your input, Mr. DiMarco. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Is there any other business to come before the board this evening? If not?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by myself. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The board is adjourned.